Good evening. We'd like to call this meet to order with the Finance and the Construction Committee. I'm gonna go over who's on the Finance Committee. Myself is the Chair. We have Trey Britt here. Mr. Terry is on... Is on the computer. He's on live. He's on virtual, I'm sorry. He's on virtual. Ms. Melissa Ocean, she's not here. And Mr. Craig Lowry, he's here for the construction. It's Mr. Henry Brewer, he's on virtual. We have Melissa Ocean, she's not here. We have Trey Britt here. We have Crystal Monroe. Alright. First order of business, the invocation by Mr. John Simmons.
If you would bow your heads, having Father grace your Lord, we thank you for allowing us to see a day we had never seen before. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to get our lives scraped. We ask that you bless each and every one here, guide us in the way that we will be successful for our kids. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Next, we have the 2023, 2023, 24 budget. Mr. Erica Sessiter.
Good evening, Chairman, Mr. Vontae Leach, Chairman John Simmons, and Board members. I have placed at your desk a packet for everything that I'm going to discuss this evening. And on the top is a summary page of the much more detailed budget that I've also included. So, the almost 60-page budget shows line by line everything that we plan on spending for this current year. The summary kind of takes that and gives us a breakdown to look at funds, then by purpose, then by object. So I'm gonna start there, and then we can lead into wherever anybody has any questions. So you see our various funding sources with state and federal. So our total budget for this year is over $372 million. Around 83% of that is state and federal funds, which are very funding-specific and have to be used for very specific purposes. Our enterprise funds are our child nutrition, our Shining Stars program, and our primetime program, which all the funds they raise have to be used back to support that program. We can't take their funds and use it in any other, for any other reason. And then our current expense and our capital outlay funds are the ones that we have the most discretion over and flexibility. And you'll see that between those two, they comprise about 10% of our budget. We also pay salaries from, all our maintenance salaries, our utilities, all of that comes out of our current expense fund. Then by purpose, that's how we're gonna do our budget resolution. So we're gonna take all of our line items from the detailed list and break it down by instructional services, which you'll see represents the largest portion that goes directly to support our classrooms. System-wide support, ancillary services, non-program charges, which is indirect costs, and then capital outlay funds. Then as we go through, we look at the salaries and benefits. And again, that represents the largest portion of all of our funds, go to support those fixed costs of salaries. We have contracted services, supplies and software, equipment, computer hardware. And the last one is a lot of the ESAR funding. The HVAC, capital outlay, maintenance is lumped into that. And you, it just gives you a snapshot of a different view on how whichever one you want to see by fund, purpose, or object. I also included the changes to our ADM over the last five years. And you can see for the first time, beginning with the current year we're in, we anticipated and did receive an increase of students. So we're finally on the track where we're moving upward on our ADM. Not by much, but it is a positive gain that we've had for this year. I also included what the overall amounts for our budget. 4% for classified employees. Certified employees received an average between 2 and 8%. The retirement match increased from 24 and 1/2 to 2502. And a hospitalization increased per person from 7,397 to 7,557. And all of that's reflected in this budget. Do you have a question, Doc? I think I'm there. I mean, I want, I need to know from you guys how you want me to proceed. You want to look at certain parts of the budget? There's page numbers. It's a lot of information you've just now seen for the first time. So typically, you know, I just wanted to give everybody a chance to look over it. But if you have any questions, I'm ready for questions.
Alright, hit your button. Turn your mic on.
No, ma'am.
I got you to know.
Blue light's on.
Ms. Erica, I'm not sure what page to look, but I'm speaking. I'm gonna ask, and this is, thank y'all for letting me crash your meeting. Say, "You're welcome." I'm not a member of either committee, but I do have some questions. And I'm doing this for the public so that this may help some understanding. I wanna go to Indian education, so I'm not sure what page that's on.
It is on page, it starts on page 28 and goes over through page 30.
Okay. Now, you can answer this generally. I don't have to have numbers. You anticipate you would get how much next year busy, just based on what we got?
This is current year. We have, we present the next year budget sometimes between April and May.
Okay, just tell me what, how much it is generally. You can just tell me.
It's $2,414,514.
Okay, did you tell us one time before that 85% of that went to salaries, the YDS, and whatever at Indian education?
It's at least 80.
80%?
It's at least 80, yes.
Alright, and what do you anticipate the rest of it is earmarked for in that salary? In that grant?
To support the summer programs. They have a summer program in June. And then some enrichment programs also to support students as they go to different conferences, Unity conferences, NASA, ACES, some of the, that all goes to support the children. Then there is travel for the YDS, the parent committee, supplies and materials for those events. And then any cultural awareness programs that IA may sponsor that occur at the IAS.
Alright, Ms. Erica, is any of that money given back to us other than indirect cost? Is it given back to us just to do what we want to with?
No, ma'am. Indirect cost is the only portion.
Okay, well, you tell us what indirect cost is and what we can do with that money. And why do we get indirect cost and who sets that amount?
So the federal government sets the indirect cost rate. And our indirect cost rate this year is less than a percent. It's .5512, I believe. So it's less than a percent, a little more than half a percent. And that's charged to the grant, and that goes back into local funds.
Okay.
But that amount, I think, is $15,222 for this year.
So what, what would we, goes back to local funds and we would use it like to pay somebody here?
We would use it to cover utilities.
Utilities, alright. So, that's it in a nutshell about finances with Indian Ed. Now, one more final question on Indian Ed. Do you see, do we give anything to Indian Ed? Like, do you have to put any kind of monies into Indian Ed? Now, he said utilities. I would assume we gotta do something.
We cover all the utilities. We cover the custodial salary there. They have had some on and off issues with a bus, activity bus. We'll cover those costs. We, the food for meetings and anything they have, we all cover that.
Alright, I hope that's clear to the public about that budget, because there seems to be still some confusion that we're taking some of the Indian Ed money and doing other things with. But I hope that clears it up, and it's on record that that's clear.
And you can see every line item that is used there. And Dr. Connie and I worked together on that budget. She has to submit a detailed budget through the parent committee to the Office of Indian Education, directly with the federal government. And once that's approved, we incorporate it into our budget. So it's a reimbursable grant. We actually use local money to pay upfront, and we have to request the money from the federal government once we show that those expenses occur.
Are we owed any money from them? Are they behind in making the reimbursement payment to us?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, February hasn't been requested, received yet, but it's only March the 7th.
One more thing. Paving, and Mr. Vontae says he's gonna talk about this. What line item would paving come out of here?
So paving is going to be... Paving is gonna be on page 52 out of the capital outlay budget.
And we do have money for paving and filling potholes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
To a point. I mean, we can't repave every site right now. I mean, we have to prioritize.
Emergency potholes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, we're gonna go over the capital projects in more detail. We're gonna drill down to that even further as we go through the budget. And we'll address some of those paving needs ongoing and upcoming.
Mr. Terry, I'm finished now.
Appreciate it. We got Mr. Craig?
Dr. Manuel changed my question, and she changed my train of thought. And some of you might know this, but indirect cost is not a good word, right, Ms. Erica? Ms. Erica and I go back with indirect cost with child nutrition. That's not, that's not, that's a whole nother discussion.
Right. And indirect cost for child nutrition is a, is a much higher rate. It's unrestricted.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's almost 10% for, and that's why Mr. Craig says that.
Yes.
And I believe, I don't wanna interrupt your question, but Mr. Vontae, Mr. Terry has his hand raised as well. Okay.
Let me follow up with this with part of what Dr. Manuel was saying. Do we have any money, and again, I'm doing this public too. Is there any money that comes in for Indian education that is specifically stated or earmarked to go to work, to go to training or workshops at schools specifically for Indian children? Like that. Let's say the school gets low-wealth money. I guess I asked it that way. Title I money. That money goes to our schools and they make decisions.
That supports the entire ADM at that school. So it supports all the students.
All the students, and they, the school principal, team, they decide how they're gonna spend it.
Correct.
There's, there's not money sent to a school that says, "This is for white children. This is for black children, or this is for Indian children."
No, sir. The, the funds are allocated based on either the 10-day enrollment. Not even ADM. We go with the higher number of enrollment.
Right.
And there's no racial descriptors in that. It's just the numbers. And Title I funds are allocated based on the child nutrition data that's received. And again, it's a lump sum of ADM.
And, and I know Ms., it's coming up, but I'm asking that again for the public, 'cause there is a conception out there, perception that we got money going out in some areas, and it's, it's supposed to be for Indian children only. And that's not true.
No, good evening, everyone. Construction Committee and all that are here. Title I is designated as disadvantaged funds for low-economic children, and it's for supporting academic achievement for all groups. Title I has never been designated for a specific group of children. It's designated for all children that qualify for low income. And we use the community eligibility report from Child Nutrition each year to get our funding. Title I does not support specific races of students. It supports disadvantaged and economically distressed students who are struggling with academic achievement.
And, and I ask that, that I've been away from a principalship for 16 years. But 16 years ago, that's the way it was, and that hasn't changed.
Title I was, you know, we originally started off with the, in 1965. I mean, we go way back with federal funding with Title I. Title I, the intended purpose, has never shifted, to my knowledge, over the years for Title I, since I've been in education, which has been almost 40-plus years. Title I is the same as it was when I was principal in the early 90s and, or mid 90s and 2000. But the purpose has not shifted, and neither has the funding priorities. Title I is based, is a needs-based grant. So when schools receive their funding, they are to do a comprehensive needs assessment. And from that comprehensive needs assessment, they are to identify the needs based on student achievement. Therefore, the school determines that budget. We allocate a large portion of our funding to the schools. But again, it's not specific to racial ethnicity of students.
And also, Ms. Jennifer, I wanna add with the Title I, and you made the statement there, and I don't think it's emphasized enough. Our schools get a budget for Title I. Each one of our schools, based on the criteria.
Yes.
Where our school might give 200,000, 300,000. That's not done in every system in this state, unless it's changed.
We are, we actually are a district-wide.
Right.
We are district-wide. You may go to a neighboring county and find that they are not district-wide. Again, it's appropriated based on economic, economics and child nutrition.
And the part I'm wanting to add on that is, is our schools are making these individual decisions for their school. Where some systems, most of that money, or a lot of it, unless it's changed, is kept at the central office. And, and things are given out. It might be teacher slots. But in our case, our schools, principals, and their committees are making decisions at the school on how to spend money. And where many school systems, they don't get that. They don't get that. I, I'm saying that, I went to meetings in the 90s. And when we stood up and talked about what we were doing with Title I then, there was other systems couldn't believe it. 'Cause they, they just didn't get the money, which, you know, I think that's great. So you've answered what I had there, but Ms. Erica, I do have one more unless Ms. Jennifer has something else.
No, just, just to reiterate, I think it's very important that the general public recognizes and understands that it is a needs-based grant. And those needs are determined individually within their schools. Collectively, we have a lot of the same needs in the district. But we do provide and allow school improvement teams, their personnel, staff members to come together collectively. We are required to do so and make those decisions. Matter of fact, we're actually with Title I out on the road. We're starting again next week. And we took that to the road, so to speak, meaning that we go into the schools. We have those personal one-on-one conversations with each principal. That gives them the opportunity to talk with us individually, us to look at their needs, and to have that conversation collectively. But in no way do we actually just come up and say, "Well, we're gonna put X number of dollars here," and the schools are not involved. They do have total decision-making power. I know that when, I will share this. I do want, I think this is very important. When I arrived in 2018, we were known as a district that purchased stuff. We had a lot of stuff. We had a lot of instructional materials. All of that was good. However, what the state has asked us to do since I've been here, and even prior to that, I'm not sure. But they've always asked us to look at the investment of building people capacity and in building student capacity. And so therefore, a lot of our funding now with Title I is actually with personnel to enrich the student learning and academic achievement. So we have actually kind of shifted gears and how those needs look in this district.
I had one more, Mr. Vontae. And Ms. Erica, this is on the first page.
On the summary, Mr. Craig? Okay.
Turn your mic on.
Okay. Some things on that first page that you said, I don't know, like, there was a word there, but there was different things involved in that word. I don't exactly remember some of those, it's got amounts of money, and then you say, "Well, we get this out of it and we get that out of it."
So the summary shows the fund, the total budget in three different ways. It shows it by your funding source. Then it shows it by purpose, so that instructional, system-wide, ancillary, non-program, and capital outlay, and then by object code. So the object is salary, benefits, contracted services, supplies, software, equipment, computer hardware, and then HVAC, capital outlay, and maintenance.
If, could you just highlight again about which ones of these here on this page, that there's basically no leeway? Other words, this is how this is spent?
So if you start with by fund, 83% of our entire budget is state and federal programs. When you add the state and federal funds together, I think it comes out to 8301. So, as you know, state and federal funds are allocated by PRC, and they, every PRC or program report code has a purpose. 001 is classroom teachers, and you'll see all of that in the, in the larger document. Low wealth, 069. Title I, as Ms. Freeman spoke of. Migrants, Title II. I mean, we can, there are hundreds of PRCs. And each of those PRCs has its own compliance document that you're required to spend those funds in a certain way. 032, exceptional children. 060 is IDEA. 049 is IDEA preschool. And they all have their own rules and regulations that we are audited on multiple times in a year, not only by our independent audit team, but by DPI or any other agency at any point in time.
And we can't move those funds around. Is that correct?
With some of the state funds, you can do ABC transfers between the funds, but it's restrictive. They have really restricted that. So it's only a few of them that you can move around. But the transferability options for federal don't exist for us because of the way we spend the funds. And like I said, the state funds are really limited. There's only maybe five that you can transfer from.
And what was the two funds that we have the leeway to move around?
Current expense is 6.10%, and capital outlay is 4.10%. So roughly 10% of our budget is what we have the flexibility to make those decisions on how it can be spent. The enterprise represents child nutrition, Shining Stars, preschool, and before and after-school care. And any funds collected for those reasons have to stay in that program. We cannot take child nutrition funds and use it for anything else other than child nutrition and for the remainder of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gentry?
And this is back to Ms., to Ms. Freeman, but I wanna make sure I'm clear on this. So is free and reduced lunch, students who receive free and reduced lunch, is that the sole criteria for determining?
We do what is called, Erica may can elaborate as well, but we, what we do is we do something each year, April 1. Ms. Charlene is in the process of garnering that information for us right now. We actually function on community eligibility report, and that is tied to the nutrition program in the district.
I can elaborate on that, Mr. Gentry. So, couple of years back, I would say maybe eight years now, the federal government gave districts the opportunity to apply for community eligibility provision that eliminates the need to collect free and reduced lunch data. It looks at your students, the number of students who receive direct services from DSS, either SNAP, TANF, any of those direct services from Department of Social Services. And it ties to nutrition. And there's a modifier that you apply to those number of students. And I think all, once we apply that modifier, every one of our schools is 100% eligible, except for maybe five or six. There's five or six that they don't qualify with that modifier. So we don't even have to collect free and reduced lunch data anymore. It's collected based on those students who get those direct services from DSS. And everybody eats free breakfast and lunch. The early college is not a part of that program, but they have their own program called Universal Free. So where they're, they still get to participate, but it's slightly, we have to do a slightly different process.
And I heard a lot of checks and balances in there, what you just said.
And what Erica's referring to is when we receive that number from Charlene, we have to do something that actually, we have to provide a 1.6 multiplier as well. And that determines whether the student, whether the school's garnered as 100% in terms of their need. And so most of our schools in this district are at 100% once we do provide that multiplier. But our highest need school right now currently in this district, in terms of, once we get that information without the multiplier, is Oxendine Elementary. And before the multiplier, they're around 88 to 89%. It's around 88% poverty rating. And so we look at that as well, because it is, Title I is simply designed for economically distressed students. It's going to be here for a long time. It's considered a hard grant. It's been around since, like I said, since 1965. It's gone through some changes, but the initial intent and the intended purpose has never changed and shifted.
And when we look at the Title I application in CCIP, the schools are ranked based on that. And I, I don't obviously remember every school's ranking, but I know Oxendine is one, and Early College is at the bottom.
And I will elaborate. With Early College, before we do the multiplier, we are actually around 35 to 40% before the multiplier. So each year, it's iffy if Early College will receive the actual Title I funding. So every year, they've actually been able to receive Title I funding. They do have a small, one of the smallest budgets. But again, it's based on getting that CER report, or as Erica has referred to it as the provision. But we refer to it in federal programs in my line, in my lane, we talk, call it the community eligibility report. But it all varies on that, and that number will come in April 1. And we, we look at that number every year, and each school shifts from year to year because populations shift. So all of that shifts. So there's a lot of moving variables when you look at Title I.
One follow-up question, please, for Ms. Erica.
Yes, sir.
Or all unused Title I funds returned to the federal government at the end of the fiscal?
We don't return funding. No, sir. The Title I grant is a 27-month grant. So we're receiving an initial allotment in a year, and then we add any carryover. We're capped at a 15%. So whatever 15% of our initial allotment is, that's the only thing that we can carry over. So those two things are combined, and that makes up our, whatever budget year we're in. And so we'll have carryover, and that process will go that way, but we don't return Title I funds.
And the 15% that Erica mentioned, that is crucial, that we stay within that 15% because we are actually reviewed as spending the funding well and appropriately during that fiscal year. The money that we receive for each year is to be spent annually based on the needs of the students at that time. So we are very, very gracious in how we look at spending that money. We, we watch it. I guess I've become a bean counter with Erica, so to speak. Our offices are next door to each other, and I think, I think she's rubbed off on me. But with that being said, we're very mindful to make sure that all the money that goes out into the building is spent for the student needs for the current year. And we never exceed the 15%. Matter of fact, we're, we're, we're very cautious of that, and we are constantly monitoring and making sure that the student, the schools are spending as they should in that current year. One last thing I would like to add, this is an additional piece of information. We do purchase orders in our, in Title I. I know Wendy does it in her state funding. We all do the same process. But one of the things that we've made sure is that recently, in the last two years, we make sure that we have all of our purchase orders in by January, ensuring that that money is spent for that current fiscal year.
Alright, Mr. Terry, I think you've been waiting for a long time.
Hey, thank you. I have a quick question. I just wanted to verify that I was on, that I have access to the same information that you guys have there. I have my, of course, the agenda. I also have a budget summary, which is about six pages. And I have the certificate of review for the new school. So that's all the documents that I have. Is there, if I, if you have anything in addition, if you don't mind sending that by email, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Terry, I, I made copies, and I will make sure you get that by email. It's too, the budget itself is too large to scan in and send that way, but I'll make sure you get an email copy, you and Mr. Brewer.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I've got it. Thank you. Erica, if you would, please, so you made reference to our fund sources, federal and state. And then Mr. Craig asked the question in terms of flexibility, and then you said about 10%. So our third fund source is local. Will you talk about that a little bit from our commissioners?
Yes, sir. So the current expense fund, we get 13.386, I believe, from our county commissioners in our county appropriations. And we receive roughly 300,000 in fines and forfeitures. That's the biggest part of our current expense fund. Then after that, we have our various grants. The Indian Education Fund, SCORE grant that we have. We have the MAC reimbursement. We have the MAC reimbursement, um, Medicaid Administrative Outreach. Um, we have direct fee for service. We have ROTC reimbursement that is a part of that grant. And I'm just going through. Print shop, we, you know, we charge for printing at our schools. We have print shop revenue, project graduation. And all of that, I'm sorry, all of that is listed on the very first page. If you turn the budget, you'll see our anticipated revenue sources there. Um, insurance settlements go in local. We have a, a grant for five nurses with our county. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our NC pre-K funding slots, um, for Ms. Jamie Flanagan's program. That's included in this budget. And then you'll see, of course, our appropriated fund balance. But on, on that very, on page two, you'll see all of our anticipated revenue for, it's thirteen three sixty, thirteen million, three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred dollars from the county. And then, of course, indirect cost is here. Um, it's lower for this year because as we mentioned in previous meetings, we are not able to charge child nutrition indirect costs because they don't currently have two months of operating expenses on hand. They have one point six. We have to receive that official designation letter every year from DPI. Um, and that's not surprising, you know, costs are rising. And we're really going to have to, um, begin that process with our schools on encouraging participation with our child nutrition program. For every child that eats, we get reimbursed. That is a reimbursable grant as well. So participation is key there.
Do I got any more questions? All right. Guess that it go to the, the next one, the update on the ESSR funding, um, Cliff?
And this trip and Erica before, so let's lay a backdrop. The importance of the ESSR funding is tied to what you just talked about, our local. We get thirteen million plus, which means then if we go in and renovate an HVAC system, it could take ten years before we can get because of thirteen million. So, so ESSR has really had a positive impact in supporting local. So that's the backdrop of why it's important. It accelerated the process to get some critical things done that otherwise would be year-to-year funding through local, right?
Absolutely. And, excuse me. I just wanted to mention, so of the thirteen million we get, eleven point seven of that goes to support maintenance. So that supports maintenance salaries um, and our utility costs and that. So we really don't have much remaining after we pay out those funds. So it, most of the budget is already spent based on those fix, fixed costs we know we're going to have in just maintenance alone. And the maintenance budget is on page thirty-one. It is PRC eight oh two and you can see where that eleven point seven million dollars is referenced. So you have a sheet, um, labeled COVID funding summary. And we, we all kind of went down memory lane when we were talking to our principals about this funding cliff. And, you know, everybody had that moment. Well, where were you when Governor Cooper came on TV or WRL? I think it was on a Saturday and he said that all public schools and all schools in, in Robins, in North Carolina would be closed effective March the sixteenth of twenty twenty. We'd never experienced anything like that before. Originally, it was planned to be a two-week closure and it, as we all know, that turned into multiple years. I did this summary and it's not every single PRC, but it's most, the major programs. You know, we had three different funding applications that were approved by the federal government. And we'll start with the first one, the CARES Act. So the CARES Act was approved by the federal government, March twenty-seventh of twenty twenty. The very first COVID funding that we received was PRC, uh, one fifty-four. It was nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And the focus in that first few months, as we all know, was mask sanitizers, cleaning, sanitation. I mean, we had to get signs. We didn't know when we'd be coming back, but the focus was cleaning, sanitizing, protecting yourself with masks and so forth. So you'll see, um, beginning with PRC one twenty-four all the way down to one seventy in the CARES Act. The biggest portion of that was ESSR one, which was PRC one sixty-three. That was eleven point four million dollars. And again, the focus at that point was a support, figure out a way over that first year how we could get students back in school. And you'll see all the different, we had student computers and devices we had to buy. School nutrition suddenly became an issue because as we know, there are children who don't get a meal unless they're in school. So the first thing we pivoted to was trying to establish a framework of remote learning and also making sure students could get meals. That was like the primary focus. And that is where DPI led us to figure out a way to get your food, um, out to students and we did that. Um, everything else there was support moving forward to getting a remote learning environment. We had more acronyms that came out from COVID funding that I don't know if I've ever seen in my entire career in education. We had CRF, which is COVID relief funding. We had ESSR, which is elementary and secondary school emergency relief. We had SRF, I couldn't find what SRF meant, uh, and GEAR, which is Governor's Emergency Education Relief. So I think overall there were close to sixty new program report codes that were created to help, um, support the COVID funding in our schools. And you can see the ones that we received on this list. So after CARES Act, there was CRRSAA, which is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. That was passed December the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty. The biggest funding source there, of course, was ESSR two. Um, we received, um, over forty-four million dollars in ESSR two alone. And at that point, the state had moved forward and gave us some mandates on summer programs. We used most of those funds to provide a summer program for our students. And again, to support the return to school, we gave out, um, employee bonuses with those funds and started the process of our playgrounds and our HVAC work, um, so we could get kids back in the building. And you'll see the other types of supports that were there. Um, school nutrition again was primary. Learning loss became a topic of conversation. And summer acceleration because we knew there would be a gap in, in a learning loss from students being absent from school. And the final, um, relief plan was ARP, American Rescue Plan, that was approved March eleventh of twenty twenty-one. And this is where we receive ESSR three, which was, uh, just over a hundred million dollars. So collectively, you can see from all three of those, uh, funding plans, the public schools of Robinson County received a hundred and seventy-three million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Each one of those PRCs had its own way we had to spend it. And we have been audited and will continue to be audited multiple times on how all of those funds were spent. They had to be spent and approved by DPI for each individual purpose. Any questions? We have spent, um, all of the funds, we're on track to spend all the ESSR three funds. There were some funds that we couldn't use because we couldn't meet the criteria, like there was one of these, um, the competency, competency-based assessment, PRC one seventy-eight, kind of in the middle of the page. We had to send those funds back because they required you to use iReady. We didn't use iReady. We had another system in place and we didn't feel that we could do all the training to put iReady back in and then not have a way to support it because we had already moved on to another assessment. So all of those things kind of happen. We work with DPI. Everything has to go through, um, their approval process. Um, most of these funds were federal, so they require us to use CCIP and get all of that documentation approved. Um, some of them were state funds, but we also were audited on all of those funds too. And again, all of these had a different, um, expiration date. The biggest one is what we're facing now is ESSR three funding cliff. Those funds will, um, expire September of twenty twenty-four and that's where we have, um, various positions in place. And as we've discussed, we have a funding stream, um, planned to secure all of those positions. So we're not going to have anyone that, um, will lose their job through retirements, attritions and so forth. We're able to keep those positions in place in various funding sources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Erica, you made reference to the audits that happened with the federal money and of course, our local money. We've had several at this point and we cleared all those audits, correct?
We've had at least ten, I would say. And that, that's financial. That's not including the programmatic. And yes, sir, we have. Um, DPI actually contracted with independent groups to come in, um, and help them because they recognized they wouldn't, with their staff, they weren't able with all these new funding sources to do that work. But yes, sir.
Great.
And I anticipate more to come as these funds expire.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Leach?
Yes.
If I may speak, um, I have a question for Ms. Erica. Would, uh, the previous comment you just made, does that mean we will be able to maintain and sustain uh, the AP positions that we created in the future and also with our CNAs?
Yes, sir. Now, we may have, um, some, um, vacant CNA positions that we might not fill. But overall, anyone who is in the position, those will, will stay. We're looking at that now, um, to see if we can, um, how it's working at each school, also in conjunction with the nurses, make sure, um, if there is an opportunity to maybe move some folks around there. But yes, the AP positions also will remain. So there will be an AP, um, at every location. We will continue that.
And Erica, also our academic coaches.
And academic coaches, correct.
Okay, uh, also another question that I'm, I have is, uh, looking at the ESSR spending, uh, when do we estimate tho, all of those expenditures being expedited?
For ESSR three?
Or is that continuous?
Well, that's been continuing over the years. All the ones from the CARE Act have now expired and we've spent those funds. So the first section that shows the CARE Act that included, uh, ESSR one and GEAR and those funds, the twenty-two million, all of those have expired. Um, all of ESSR two has expired and we've spent those funds. And so now we're in the process of expending, um, ESSR three and we'll have till September of twenty twenty-four this year to expend those funds.
And the funds that you, uh, mentioned earlier in the one seventy-eight bracket was the only ones that we had to actually return?
There was that one and then there was one more, um, and it was the same thing. I think it was the one seventy-three contract instructional support because it required a local partnership with, um, um, like health service providers and we weren't able to fill those positions either. But other than those two, there's just been small amounts like rounding a hundred dollars or less. Um, other than those two categories, one seventy-three and one seventy-eight.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, okay. Update the status on twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, capital projects.
Okay, so the final sheet I included is actually front and back page. And, um, we started tracking projects, um, in twenty twenty-one. I think our last project, so I'm gonna just go in order on this sheet, was the Fairmont High School track. And it took some time to get everything in place there. I think there may have been an issue getting a vendor, um, in place for that. But that project's finally completed in this school year and you'll see the estimated and actual cost there. Moving forward to projects that were approved in twenty-two, twenty-three that have also been completed in the current, uh, school year, you'll see, um, I'm not gonna go through every one of them unless you'd like for me to. But the paving renovations, shining stars is a big part there. And you'll see Long Branch Parkings ninety percent complete and Purnell Sweat Tennis Courts is ninety-five percent complete. And both of those were way over cost because the scope changed with Long Branch Parking and as well with Purnell. Um, we ran into some issues with, um, leveling the dirt and getting everything the way it had to be for the tennis courts and expanding those. That's why that cost, if it went from just a surf resurfacing to a complete overhaul. But other than that, the other projects are completed and you'll see the, the costs associated there.
Mr. Chair, if I may please?
Your, um, mic is not on just.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Erica, will you take us back to Shining Stars? That investment of that facility? And then Dr. Carr, if you will address, one, we're now able to apply for funding because we've facility has been cleared and we've already started the process of enrolling additional students. Can you address that, please?
So the Shining Stars renovations were in two phases. The first one being, well, there was a, a part of the Shining Stars location that was owned by the county. And, um, they gave us that part and we did a complete re-haul there and added classroom space. Observation rooms, thank you, and, um, entry points and it's a beautiful, uh, spot there. And then the phase two was updating to have a true cafeteria. Previously, um, the, there was a little break area that was used to prepare their food and the students, it was given out to the students in their classroom. Well, now the way the students can come in, so they're prepared for when they start, um, school and kindergarten. They know the process of going to the cafeteria, getting their plate, eating in the cafeteria. So that was the second phase of that project. Um, and the building looks completely different.
So approximately two weeks ago, we were able to open and actually start having students attend. Um, we finally passed every criteria that we needed to, to have our EC and our, um, paid students come back to Shining Stars and add those to Shining Stars. Um, so as we move forward into the upcoming year, we'll be able to see about getting more NC pre-K slots so that we'll have more funding to help support the program. So we're really excited because kids are out in the cafeteria getting the food and they're just really excited to be able to hold their own tray and get that. And so we've seen a lot of good things and we can't wait to see what happens next.
Mr. Chair, if I may please. So Erica, one question, like child nutrition, we're now treating Shining Stars as enterprise, correct?
Correct. But I mean, maybe be clear that the pre-K funding for food is not a part of their traditional child nutrition program. Child nutrition supports K-12. It does not support pre-K. There's a separate program for pre-K, um, nutrition and it has to follow more of the daycare standards, not the federal nutrition standards, which they may be similar. I don't know to that granular level, but I know they have a different pattern to follow and they do, don't get reimbursed. But they do get funding from, um, the funding sources for the pre-K, um, nutrition.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, if you don't mind. Um, so with some of these projects like, um, in particular, like the paving and the tracks, uh, and some of those, uh, other types of projects, what sort of warranty, uh, do we have with those, um, maybe like, um, a, a track? What, what are the typical warranties for those types of, um, projects?
We can get that information for you, Mr. Terry. Um, that's typically housed with the athletic department, um, through Mr. Patterson. Um, but I know it would vary. It's something that's set up in the contract. Um, I think initially in the past, it's been five years. But I don't want to speak to a specific project without seeing, looking at that individually, but in the past, it's been five years.
Okay, yeah, with the, like, um, with the tennis courts as well, it would be interesting to see, see those. Well, just to make sure, you know, down the road, we're not doing it again in the next couple of years.
Yes, sir.
And that is correct. Erica, on the track is five years.
Okay. And moving forward to the, I'm sorry.
Still got a question? Okay.
As we move forward to twenty-three, twenty-four capital outlay projects, you'll see, um, the modular units at St. Paul's High School. Um, and if you haven't been by there to see that, I mean, the modular units look like they've always been there. They really mirrored the school. Um, again, the kitchen renovations, the phase two is what we've already discussed there for the cafeteria expansion at Shining Stars. Um, and the smaller projects, Oxenden, um, drop ceiling and LED lights and then And then a larger project that's 95% complete, the utility project at St. Paul's High School. So as you know, St. Paul's has a lot of things going on currently. We're looking at bathroom renovations for softball, we've added the modular classrooms and then the multipurpose classroom at Fieldhouse at that site. So all of those things together collectively required an up, complete overhaul of the utility systems. As the different vendors were digging and going through it and working with the town and different things, that we had to update a lot with the sewer and the overall utilities. So that's where that project is in addition to the actual units themselves and getting all of that up and going. But we did put what we originally had estimated and what it ended up costing and you'll see that difference there. And then if we turn over to the other side, we have some emergency projects, roofing projects that have come up in this year and we've brought to the board and discussed Townsend, which came way under cost. Lumberton Junior, Pembroke Middle and Piney Grove were some smaller jobs there. And then as we move forward to 24, 25 proposed capital projects, we have the bleachers at Lumberton Junior High, paving at the St. Paul's Middle Parking Lot where the teachers park and where Mr. Ernie has let me know, the sewer replacement estimate is around $400,000. So right now, we're having to, what was it called, Mr. Ernie? Pump and haul? Pump and haul from Littlefield. So we're eventually gonna have to do something there. That's a monthly cost that by doing this replacement, we've probably spent that this year alone in trying to get there with a pump and haul system.
Erica, please, before you move on. Mr. Ernie, can you speak to that a little more in terms of what's happening?
Yes, sir. Years ago, when they built the cafeteria addition kitchen area, we developed, we purchased land from the bigs and we developed a nitrification field out in the wooded area on past the athletic compound. And when they designed that, they designed a portion of that field to handle the rest of the building. So down the road, when our current system, which we have there has failed, we could actually put a pump station in and develop another nitrification field out there on the property and that's been cleared out. We, during the same time, we ran an extra line, a force feed line to that area, so that's not got to be done. So it's just a matter of, we've already spoken with an engineer and we've got to provide him with the data and he's got, may have to do some boring on the site, just to double check the soil rate. But other than that, it's just purchasing the tank, the control system, the pumps and tying in the existing system on the old portion of the building and then tying into the pipe that we already have run and developed the nitrification field out in the area that we've pre-purchased. So we had a lot of things working in our, in advance on that anticipatory thing. So that's basically where we're at with that. And as soon as the engineer gets those, we did a good estimate. What we call good estimates is based on previous projects from years ago and just looking at the time and how much, you know, how volatile the markets are today, trying to keep estimates up. So that's what we did on that and we spoke with a few engineers on some of our numbers. So that's where those numbers came from, about 350 to 400. And that, again, that could come under that, just depended upon how we get the materials at that time. And one more, I think as of last week, we were right at $90,000 on pump and haul for the last, I think, two, right at two years, maybe.
And then we've also put in an estimate request for locker room renovations at Lumberton Senior High School for girls locker room. And then lastly is the paving at IEA. We've talked about a couple of times, we've actually received $75,000 from some land that was sold there to finish the IEA parking lot and get that paved. That is an estimate. It may be higher than that. Then I just wanted to put on here some projects that we've previously, previously discussed, but at the time, we just haven't moved forward with and don't have a timeline at this point. The tennis courts and football field bleachers at Red Springs Highs, we know that was another part of completing that complete project at Red Springs. And I just brought those on here because, you know, they still are in discussion, we just haven't moved forward with those. And then we have some low or no cost projects that are currently in the planning phase. All of our Duke Energy Schools, Duke is actually going around and doing a survey of those parking lights, parking lot lights. If they are a certain number of years older or older, 20, I think, 20 or 25 or older, they're gonna replace them at no cost to us. But they're going back and forth now, they may decide to just replace them all. So that's why I say we're in the planning, we're in discussion, but it will be low or no cost to us. Also, looking at indoor light upgrades at both Red Springs Middle and St. Paul's Middle School, converting to LED lighting in those classrooms.
Mr. Leach?
I got Mr. Craig first, then you'll be next after he finishes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vante. First off, is this list, front and back, and folks, I've said something like this before. We started three or four years developing list projects. And Mr. Lawson, yes, to go through and look at this and say, this is completed, this is done. We used to couldn't do that or we didn't do it. And, and we got to where we did a list and you didn't take money to go do this or whatever, you finished what was on that list. And folks, there's been a lot of stuff done in the last two or three years because this board and the central office stayed focused on fixing and doing these things. So, you know, I'm thankful for that and hopefully we will continue to do that. Now, let me say two things here and, and the IEA parking lot is mainly gonna be like driving around it. So, and that's something, and just so you know, we sold some land that was being leased to the university, that's where the $75,000 is at. That was done probably three years ago.
At least three.
At least three years. So there's some money there to help offset that paving there. I would like to mention, we talked about one time just to track it, Purnell Sweat and it has been ran on probably in four years. And I know that's not something now, but that's one of those things down the road we need to look at doing because they can't use it. It's just, they, kids getting shin splints out there as is. Now, let me mention this part here in two ways and Dr. Manion might want to add. We know we can't go to all schools, every school in this county probably could use some paving. It's some form or another and we, we can't physically pay for that or can't pay for all the paving that's needed. But I would ask two things. I've had calls from Magnolia, I've been to Magnolia and they have some serious issues around where buses go and it might be paving that's just wore out, but I would ask that we would, Dr. Williamson could look at getting crush and run to that particular school. And we know we've got a surplus dirt sweat from those tennis courts that needs to be hauled away and probably have some at the central office for maintenance, but go check Magnolia. But then where we've done surveys of needs of schools, that if through maintenance, we could just have someone go around and check the pothole problem in the county. Because what I'm looking at with the crush and run we have on hand and people we've got, that might be something that we could get people going around now. We hadn't, we hadn't started cutting grass and where they would have timed it, where they are severe places, that they could get something out, get there with a tractor and do some smoothing out and help that particular school. Because we know we can't go here and pave 30 schools, but that would help that school and that's again, something that would be helping all schools. But now I will say this issue, I went with Magnolia a year ago and there were some issues there that needed to be in, having attention then and I don't think it's, they might be put stuff out, but it's just not worked. So we need to get back out and check it again.
Yes, Ms. Craig and Mr. Chair, if I may. And Mr. Ernie, you may want to speak to this. We've already directed Bobby to do those surveys. He has generated a list of pothole needs, et cetera, that we will address. You want to add to that, Mr. Ernie?
Yes, in the process that when those potholes are actually, they get to a certain level, like you're talking about, where the crush and run won't remain in them. Mr. Bobby brings in what we call the paving crew, there's a paving crew he works with and they come in and professionally fix those areas. If you've been around to some of the driveways, you see little square patches on the driveway and that's done by that particular company and you, you don't have to worry about going back to that. So, and that's, that's been his most surefire way of trying to solve the problem. But as you're right, we do have crush and run items that we use, but thing with crush and run, it's gonna, tires are gonna keep it and pushing it out, that's correct. But there is a system in place and that one, we, we're already moving on the Magnolia thing to try to get that and taking care of ASAP.
I did want to make sure that, I reiterate that everything on this project is from our capital outlay funds. This is not everything that we've done, as you indicated, Mr. Craig. None of the HVAC specific projects are on here, outdoor classrooms, playgrounds, all those things, because those were done with SRR funding. And we've, we have given out those previously and we can give that again if necessary, but I did want to make sure that that point was made. We also, I'm sorry, we also are in, as you know, we're, we're gonna hear an update tonight on the new career center. So Public Schools of Robinson County has committed $2.5 million as a match along with the County of Robinson and we have spent a little over a million dollars, like 1.1 million of that match. So we will also have to use capital outlay funding to obligate the remainder of our match as we move forward in construction phase.
Dr. Manion?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Thank you, Mr. Vante for, let me speak. Folks, you know the calls we receive about the e-curriculum tray and all of you? I've had more calls about those potholes than I did about the e-curriculum, the math curriculum, complaints about who's been hired, not been hired. Folks, I encourage all board members to go out and look at those potholes. It is really unsafe. I got three calls today, two calls yesterday. I am begging you, with, where you had a line where you said emergency, I'm begging you. I know there's a process, I know you have a process. I'm begging the superintendent, Mr. Ernie, Mr. Bobby, to please fix the potholes. Let it be one of your emergencies, please, at Magnolia. Now, I, I know St. Paul's has an issue, but when you compare St. Paul's and Magnolia, I haven't looked at St. Paul's in all fairness, Ms. Monroe. Okay, if you have it, I am begging you, let this be a mercy, you got your processes, but you know, folks, these people are not taking talk. I told them that we had a process and I tell you what the lady says, your process is good and you're gonna pay for my tires and lining my car and said, no, ma'am, I can't do that. So I'm begging you, go look yourself. Thank you so much.
All right, we got, Mr. Lawson?
I'm on.
All right.
I'm on.
Mr. Chair?
I forgot, I got Henry there, Mr. Lawson. Here we go.
Um, also, I wanted to make sure we add on that list between Red Springs High School and Red Springs Middle School. It has been brought to my attention that we got a severe issue with the traffic flow is heavy when our kids are released from school each day. That might need to be looked at also, Mr. Ernie. And also, I was wondering if we had, backing up a little bit, Ms. Erica, I wanted to mention it when you were on the topic, on the new lighting, do we have a estimated savings as to how much we think that's gonna help us in the future on those new LED lighting?
Not at this time because we haven't moved forward with that yet. We've got to determine exactly which ones and so forth. But we know somewhere down the future, we want to look at a performance contract too, but at this point, we're still in that planning phase, but we can get some information once we solidify some more of those details.
So how much completion would you say that we have countywide with new LED lighting?
I would have no idea. I'd have to defer that to Mr. Ernie. He could probably get you that information, that may be something.
Just the estimate.
Estimate.
The LRMC schools, where we have power with them, they have been pretty much on target for us in getting their campuses up. So it will just be a matter, Mr. Brewer, of us trying to go out and get you those numbers. It won't take long to get them because actually, we're currently working with Duke now. I think they got disconnected, Mr. Henry.
Okay, I got you now. I don't know what happened, but thank you, Mr. Ernie, for that report. Thank you, Mr. Leach.
We're back, we got the audio back.
Mr. Leach, I'm satisfied. I appreciate your time, Ms. Erica. Mr. Ernie?
Yes. I know, but I have Mr. Lawson.
If you could then copy this and then pack it forward, you'll receive it on, that's good. Yes, yes, sir.
I know you're sitting there looking for that. Get down on the numbers that way.
And I'm just gonna ask if it's not too much trouble if everyone receives a copy tonight and we get back for the meeting, that way we don't have to waste so much paper and trust us, thank you. That way we don't have to waste so much paper and trust us. Thank you.
I was saying, I know what Mr. Craig earlier, um, home makes projects, he's probably still being, being more, um, closed. At least for you, I know. The next thing that I say is everybody needs.
And everybody needs a Mr. Ernie Hamlin. Okay?
We need everybody.
You couldn't do it without him.
It takes us all. Thank you.
She, she knows where the money's at if anybody's got a question.
I did want to mention too, with our capital outlay funds, so we have a new funding source that we've had a couple of years, but now it looks like it's going to continue the. We've got three different types of lottery funds. We've got what I call the regular lottery, which is what we get annually from the state. We've got our needs based grant that we received and was awarded to build a new career in technical high school. And we have something called repair and renovations. We refer to it as the R and R fund. So that'll be a continuous amount of money. It's about 300, 301,000 a year. That we can use to directly, um, update classrooms. So as long as it's for classroom, you can do a lot with that. So I just want to let everybody know, you know, sales tax, of course, we get from our county. That's where we get those funds from.
I think, Mr., I think, Mr. Chair got a question before you step down.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, I was just, um, giving you the thumb up to let you know that I could hear now.
Okay.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you, Ms. Erica.
Thank you.
You can sit down now. You're done.
Hold tight, hold tight.
Good job. Now we're going to have, um, Dr. Freddie Williamson with a certificate review for the new career center.
And I, I just want to echo what Chairman Lawson said, uh, how blessed we are in this district, the talent. That, that's working every day to make things happen and it is amazing. And again, a special thank you to our finance person, Erica, and to Mr. Ernie. You need to spend some time with Mr. Ernie at a 10 o'clock at night, walking through a building, trying to figure something out. You need to do that, trying to keep up with him and what he knows about every building, what everything, it's just amazing. So, so that's right. That's right. So thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We did put at your site a certificate of review. We've been waiting on this. For two things, and let me start one by saying thank you again to Senator Britt and to State Superintendent Truitt. For the additional 12 million dollars that worked towards our project. We just appreciate that so much. What this certificate of review means is we can now physically start construction at the site. This is what we've been waiting on. That's one thing that it means, right? Right. The second thing, it means that Mr. Erica can now officially draw down on the need based grant money. You want to talk about that and what we've done and used so far, please?
So as we all know, our total grant at this point is 72 million dollars for this project and it's been phased in over a couple of years. Initially, we were able to draw down three and a half million dollars, which was the planning phase, getting all of the, um, architecture engineering documents together, getting the site prep work. And we have spent that three and a half million dollars. We're also, as I indicated, in the midst of spending our two and a half, um, two and a half million dollar match. The county has already given, um, everything except I think 393. Of their two and a half match, and we also have 5 million dollars skeezy grant that will be used once we get to the portion of the planetarium and science center. That 5 million will be used to directly support that. As Dr. Williamson indicated, um, we're not able to draw. I've already submitted, well, I actually submitted a request back in October. And now we've been cleared for the certificate of review. We'll get 20 million dollars that'll be held by the county in an account. And as we get invoices, we'll draw those funds down so we don't have any, um, issues with that payment. Obviously, we didn't have the funds on hand, so we need these funds. It won't be reimbursement like regular lottery. We'll actually get the funds upfront to pay it because we don't have that kind of capital in place. Any questions? Thank you.
I got a quick question, if you don't mind. Um, with the 12 million that we received, um, earlier this week. Would, would, would that require an additional match from the county?
That will require an additional match. I think it's shade over 300,000.
Okay, okay. And also, um, what would that, uh, what, what would those funds, um, be utilized for? Will we be able to increase the size of the building or do, or just additional upgrades or what?
Part of the reason the state is, has been continuing to add, um, additional funds to existing grant awards. Is that along with COVID and other things, the construction market is still not stable. So it's our original plans, but the costing, um, once we put things out for bid and everything is, are so much higher than they were when we initially were awarded funds. That's why the, the state continues to add because what we originally thought we would spend for the project has increased due to, um, the construction market and the instability.
Would that, um, would that impact the, the original GMP? Or that guaranteed maximum price?
Oh. I can't really answer that at this point. I don't think so. Um, nothing is changing in any of our existing contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And other questions? Nope. Next we have a, a project update, um, new career center by, um, Michael Holborn. Is he on?
Yes, he's online. Michael?
Yes, can you all hear me okay? Hello?
Yes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name's Michael Holborn. I'm the project manager with SFLA. Thank you again for, uh, letting me present to you today. I'm just going to go over the, uh, brief construction schedule, um, kind of where we're at right now. Um, I'm going to go back to February 16th. We issued, uh, construction documents for bid. We immediately turned around on February 19th and issued our review comments to DPI, which as previously mentioned, um, allotted us the, uh, certificate of completion. So big credit to my team for working really hard on responding to all those comments. The project is currently in bid, so we're actively receiving RFIs from subcontractors, uh, about the documents. We will continue to respond to those and we will be, um, the subcontractors have till March 21st. To issue any RFIs that they have about the documentation. And then our goal right now is to issue a, a final addendum that responds to any of those questions on March 26th. The bid day that Metcon has set on their schedule is April 2nd. Uh, once all the bids have come in, Metcon will need, um, about four to six weeks probably to, uh, review all the scopes. Make sure that, you know, there aren't any, you know, I guess just to work through the bids. And then they have on their schedule a Board of Education approval date of May 14th. Assuming all that kind of works out and all the approvals happen, uh, you know, theoretically, construction could start as soon as that Board of Education approval happens. So May 15th could be the first day they could start construction. Uh, it would just depend on, you know, how the bids come in and, and any decisions that the board decides to make on that. Are there any questions about the current schedule?
Mike on?
Yeah.
Hit the button, Mr. Craig. There you go.
Mr. Mike, uh, can you hear me? Got a question. You said the, uh, the final thing where you could get started, you're looking at May the 15th.
That's correct.
And that would come to us then, uh, just to comment, unless something happens, we will be meeting May the 8th. That's our May meeting and, um, it would be nice to have that information where if we have a vote on something, we could go ahead and do it then and you could get started. Instead of, you talking about waiting another month, starting in June. And we don't know what's going to happen, you know, down the road with building and stuff. So just a thought, our next meeting then would be May the 8th unless there were to be some issue.
Okay, that would be, that's good to know. I will pass that information on to Metcon. You know, really, uh, they're working through the bid, so I can just tell them they can try to expedite that and be prepared for your May 8th meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Do you hear?
Mr. Holborn, is this, uh, with this 12 million additional that was added, will that complete the total scope of the CTE school? If not, what will it encompass?
Um, I can't really answer that until we get official bids in, to be honest. Uh, as Ms. Erica mentioned, this construction. Uh, market right now is, is very volatile. It's really hard to gauge. You know, the state did set aside that additional 12 million because inflation has been, uh, quite high in the construction industry. And so they're trying to help these projects, um, not fall short. Uh, but I can't really answer you until we receive those bids back, exactly what's going to happen. But the idea is that yes, the total scope is, is meant to be covered by the project budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Gentry? Relates back to, uh, Mr. Craig's question and statement about the bid dates. And I, I think I heard April 2nd is the deadline for bid dates. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and again, uh, I'm concerned about the, the timing. I, I'm, I'm assuming bid, this is any and all bids for all phases of construction. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
And again, I'm, I'm also concerned about the timing of, uh, of considering all of those bids and, you know, and, and making an accurate decision. In a timely one, uh, in time for, uh, the May 15th, uh, board meeting. I, I don't know what the typical time range is, but, uh, that sounds awfully close to me.
Yeah, I, um, I'd have to get with Metcon on their, um, post-bid process. And how long their planning to take and how much time they can allot, uh, to your group to review that with you prior to your board meeting. Um, but that's something I can definitely, um, reach out to them about and see if we can kind of maybe hone in on exactly what the schedule is going to be and how we can work that out with you. So it might be, maybe I coordinate with Bobby further on that and he can communicate, um, exactly what those dates and that process would look like.
Yeah, because obviously we don't want to be on, you know, in a rush to make a decision. This is, whatever happens is going to be of utmost importance, have a big impact.
That's correct. And I, and you know, while I'd like to push on Metcon a little bit on the bid, I do want to make sure that they have, uh, adequate time to review the scopes. Because the worst thing you can do is miss something or, you know, a subcontractor is not, you know, they have their bid, but they're missing items, things like that. And that's what Metcon is going to take that, those four weeks doing is going through every part of the building and reviewing every bid and making sure that everything is covered so that we have an accurate bid. So while, you know, as an architect, I don't mind pushing on contractors a little bit. I do want to make sure that they, uh, have the time they need to, to be as accurate as possible. We don't want any surprises down the road.
Correct. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, next up, we will have, um, EC update and, um, the physical savings. Dr. Wendy Dorsakar and Dr. Julie Oul.
So, good evening Chairman Vontae Leach, Vice Chairman Simmons and everybody else. Tonight, what we'd like to do is provide an update on EC and the changes that we are going to make to help put us in alignment. And get us out of, um. Having misalignment when we look at what classes should look like and in compliance. So based on what is required from the state, we looked at all of this information about our EC teacher, I'm sorry, EC teachers, EC, um, TAs and students. And identified what changes needed to occur based on compliance issues. I'll have Ms. Julie kind of get into that in a little more detail, but what we really want to make sure is that we don't have classes that we do currently where we have 16 self-contained students. And a teacher or two TAs. Um, and so one of the things we've had to do over the last year is create waivers to make sure that we could, um, continue doing those classes. But we can't continue that. A waiver is only allowed for one year. So in order to put us in compliance with EC, we are making some changes and we're going to talk through why and how we're making them and, um, go school by school. So I'm going to let Julie give a little more explanation before we get into all the details of what you have in front of you.
So our goal was really to try to get as many of our students back to their homeschool and their community. As well as, um, decrease their drive, their riding time on buses and maybe decrease costs for transportation. But most of all, make our, our classrooms compliant, um, to class size requirements. And those class size requirements are really for many reasons and they are to make sure that we're giving the services to the student that they deserve. And our teachers also are not being overworked and over-challenged with, um, having 14 students in there with very intensive needs. So we're really talking about our intensive classrooms and making these moves, um, and how to make it right. If you look at the class size chart, I think you'll see that, um, it goes by elementary, middle and high. And if you look where it says extended content standards column and go on down, you'll see that, um. You, you can't just keep adding TAs, that you have to have a teacher ratio. And the max number of TAs is usually around two. If you add three and four, it doesn't really make, get you into compliance. So I think that's important to look. We, we have been doing that and they have staff in there. But it is still not the compliance that class size requirements really ask you to do. So if you look at that with, you know, you're looking for six students with one TA or eight students with two TAs. So you'll see a lot of changes in our TAs, um, but I think we, we will explain why that is. And by returning students to their homeschool as much as possible, we looked at classes around six. If they didn't have six at a school, uh, we, we had to kind of go plus or minus a little bit, make a decision. But, but I think you'll see that we really have gotten our TAs and our teachers in better places.
So what we want to do, you all have a long spreadsheet that we're going to go through and describe what that really means. Because part of what Julie and the team did is look at student needs to determine how many should be in a class. So we know some of our students have much more intense needs, so we're looking for smaller class sizes with those. And so what we really wanted to ensure is that we're matching the service needs of our students with the opportunities that we're providing them in the school to meet that compliance. And meet the needs of fate when we think of our students. So Dr. Julie Oul has been with Cumberland County. She actually served 14 years as a assistant director or a director of EC. She retired from there. She has been actually helping us for several years. A few years ago, when EC needed to do a re-hall based on some audit findings, she helped us get out of that. And so now she is in, uh, support mode, helping us as we make additional changes as a support person in the district. So she's been a vital component, helping us look at what's going on with EC and continue growing, um, the program so that we have a better and stronger program as we move forward. So if you'll see, um, you'll see that we have Carol Middle. So if you'll see, um, you'll see that we have Carol Middle. And what you'll see there is currently we have four resource teachers, two separate teachers and six TAs. And so based on those numbers, Julie's gonna share what changes would be made.
So we're recommending to delete one EC resource teacher, uh, which is a vacancy, so we will not fill that position. Um, and delete one TA position, which is a vacancy, and we will not, um, fill that position either. So they'll end up with three resource teachers and two ECS teachers, five TAs, one resource TA and three, and, and four ECS TAs.
And so what you'll also see underneath, it tells you that that's 29 resource students and 17 separate students. Um, if you look at deep branch, we currently have two resource teachers and one TA. And so I'll let Julie, Julie tell you.
So we're not recommending any changes for the teacher. Um, and, and that teacher will have, um, 21 students. The, um, TA position we are deleting, not filling that position, is a vacancy. And, um, we will be replacing one at Union Chapel ECS class.
We got a question for you, Dr. Millen.
I'm not, oh, there you go. I have a question, so I will understand the premises of why this is done. Is this fluid? Is this, in other words, what I'm trying to ask, is this gonna be forever? What about based on needs? Will this change? How long is this in effect for?
So it truly will be a yearly, um, review because we have to look at where the students are currently. So this is based on next year's numbers. So thinking about preschool that is coming up and currently where they are and the needs, our intent is to keep as many as possible where they are. So you'll see in a little bit, we didn't make as many moves as it may appear because there was quite a few vacancies. But we did, um, have to look at every year if all of a sudden there's an influx from pre-K into one school. That might mean creating another ECS class or another resource class. And so we do have to make EC be reflective of the needs of the students, um, instead of the school keeping that same set of teachers all the time. Um, it's sort of the same thing I used to have to do when I taught EC when there was a movement of those students and there was a bigger population, we had to move with those students. And so it's really being reflective of the needs of our students and helping us stay in compliance with the needs.
Okay, then, that makes sense then. And, you know, at some point in time, we used to have satellite sites that we would send this specific child there and transport these children. So that makes sense in what you're saying. But I, I can see it though changing, it would, it would be fluid, it would not be permanent forever. And I, and this is just a pit people mind. I would have loved the curriculum committee to have been part of this process tonight, hearing this, because it's so much leaning into the needs of children. So that, that's just a thought, maybe if you do it another year, that you involve the curriculum committee in this process. Thank you.
Um, so looking at East Robinson, currently they have one resource teacher. Um, and we're looking at creating one new position there. And they don't, currently do not have a self-contained class. So that would be adding a self-contained class and have one, um, TA.
Right, so we'll add the ECS teacher. Um, and the number of students in resource are 17 and separate eight. Um, with pre-K coming up, there'll be, uh, 22 resource students and, um, eight, uh, ECS students. And I think that, um, that class size can be maintained. And again, some of these are, we're gonna follow trends too. So we will be looking at trends of all these classrooms and all, because it seems that the students kind of move in certain directions and the students move up too. So we will be able to follow trends over three years.
So next you'll see Fairmont High. Currently, we have four resource teachers and three OCS teachers, three self-contained teachers and 10 TAs.
We're not making any changes to teachers or TAs there. They will continue to have the same staff numbers. Uh, they do have, uh, 63 resource students and 32 separate.
Fairmont Middle currently has two resource teachers, two separate teachers and six TAs.
So we're recommending there to, um, decrease one ECS, uh, teacher. And, uh, that teacher will, will be moving to another school. Um, and that would be, um, Red Springs High School. We'll delete one TA and that, um, position is currently vacant. Um, so we will also, um, we were able to put a lot of people in vacancies, so we will also fill a vacancy there. So we will be staffed as, as far as TAs.
Yes, I got a question. Um, I see, I just wanna make sure a, a lot of TAs itself not losing their, their jobs and stuff. In the, in the, nobody is, okay? I just, I just wanna put that out there for the public to know that nobody's not losing their job. We're not, okay?
No, no, no single TA or teacher will lose the job in this move.
All right, Mr. Craig got a question?
You'll have to ask that. I'm not familiar. Okay, let me make sure, and, and Mr. Vontae just hit it there. We're moving teachers or TAs around. And if there's vacancies with these moves, we're probably not having to fill the vacancy. Not, not in all cases, but in most cases. So I noticed on here is moving people getting maybe closer to home and stuff like that. So I know you got all this stuff here, if you wanna go through it, it's fine. Now, I'm gonna just say, if we're moving people like that and helping them as far as where they're at, nobody's losing the job, we're not necessarily filling the vacancy. And then this is where this will be fluid, because the number of children might change. So then this would have to change. So if this is something we're doing from that, that's something that's gonna help the kids and help the teachers, especially if you go from being 30 minutes from home or 10 minutes from home. And that's something I think we need to always keep in mind when we do stuff. So, you know, I'm good with that part. Now, talk to me about satellite sites. Do we, will we still have? I'm not sure, will, will we still have some of those?
We have a couple, just because, for example, there's only one middle school that has a BED class, a behavior class. So that will be the only middle school. Um, Lumberton High is the only one that has them for the high school. So those will. A couple of schools do not have, for example, self-contained because maybe they have no students that would naturally go there, or they had one. We weren't gonna create a whole new class for one student, so we may have kept them where they were originally. Um, the other thing that we looked at is if there's a student that only has one more year at that school, instead of disturbing them, letting them finish at that school and then going to the site that they would naturally go to the next year. So those are sort of things that we considered when we looked at that to make sure. So there are a couple, if there was one student, they may be going to another school that's close by just so that we wouldn't create a whole new class at, I think Oxendine was one example. We only had one student that would have been there. And so instead of creating a whole class, that child's going somewhere else.
And a satellite site, for anybody watching, is Dr. Dorsey, if you would, just what is a satellite site? I know I asked it, what is that?
It's basically that, that is the site where one sort of, like, for example, BED. If that's the only place that we have, everybody that is identified in that category that needs support will go to that one school. And usually those sites, it happens that way because usually that's an identification that we don't have as many students in. And so to truly serve them, we need to make one location. For example, Lumberton Junior for their BED class, I think currently only has four students, and that's for the entire district. So that's not feasible to have a site at every school. So thinking about how do we meet the needs of our students and give them the support they need.
And there are some students and with this year, or they are or are not students, we're cutting down on their transportation. So some students might be moved back to where they would have been in school.
Yes.
And, um, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of parent conversations with, we're doing this, why we're doing this and getting all that out. Let me ask, when would that possibly start? Because is this, is, this is for next year, right?
This is for next school year.
So when will, when will those kind of conversations start with parents?
So we're actually starting to have conversations now with some pieces. We wanted to make sure we had the numbers right first. Um, so we had to get the preschool numbers correct and everything. So we actually just finalized this about a week and a half ago. So now starting to have the conversations with everybody about the changes and moves so that parents know that their child is going back to their home school. So that will be part of what they'll find out in the next month or so.
Thank you.
That does involve, uh, 37 students moving back to home schools. So it's, it's not as many as it sounds, but it's still significant.
Uh, I'm like Mr. Craig, I, with what you're saying, and I'm not on the committee now. I, I crashed what you're saying. I mean, I, I don't see any need in going through every one of them one by one, unless somebody else has them.
You, I agree. I just had that conversation with John. I, I agree. Um, and the summary page, is this the same thing that's on this summary page?
So the summary, one of the things that we do, we can tell you. So what we can tell you on the summary page is how many classes will open with? So these are new self-contained classes, right?
Let's go.
So if you look at the summary page, it should be a sheet that says summary at the top and has numbers with schools. Um, and so, for example, Rex is gonna have a class open, East Robinson, Union. Peterson will have an additional class open. They currently have one, they'll have two. Um, Union Chapel will have one open, St. Paul's High will have one, uh, Red Springs High will have one. Um, Fairmont Middle will actually close one class and keep one. Um, Southside Ashpool will close their class. They won't have enough students. Oxendine, like we talked about, will close. Lumberton High School will actually lose a class because of those students actually going back to St. Paul's. A lot of them are from St. Paul's. Um, and Tanglewood will also close a class and keep one. Um, and so instead of those kids having to travel everywhere, they're now going back to their home school.
All right, I think Mr. Terry got a question.
Yeah, so, so at this point, this is a proposal, right?
No, this is the changes that we have to do in order to stay in compliance.
Okay, so have we spoke with, uh, have we had a conversation with these employees? Um, have we had a, a conversation with these parents, uh, that, that are gonna be moved? Did their children are gonna be moved around?
The, like we were sharing, this plan has only been completed at little more than a week, about a week and a half. So the next steps are to share with parents, but then also we have a plan in April to start sharing with the staff, the moves, because we wanna make sure that anybody that may be retiring or something that we don't know about, that we can take that in consideration before we say, you're moving here. Because there may be somebody, we know we have one on the list that may potentially become a teacher within the next month. So that would mean we'd have to change somebody else. So we didn't wanna make those drastic changes without all the transitions and everything that may occur when they have those requests.
So what you're seeing is, um, that, that this is essentially, um, in, in stone and there's no flexibility in any of this at this point?
As far as our students and staff, yes, because, and honestly, most of our, if you look at our EC, we actually have 17 openings in certified staff for EC teachers. So quite honestly, we're not really moving many teachers. We're moving four teachers where we're closing classes and moving them somewhere else. And TAs, some of our staff are, um, based on the compliance previously, had too many TAs at their schools. Because what had happened is students, there was a reduction in number of students, but the TAs never changed. So what we're trying to do is get everything back in compliance so that we make state and federal guidelines when we look at FAP and ensuring that our kids get what they need.
There will be, um, transition meetings with a lot of the parents and, uh, about the student and, and during the next, uh, from April 1st on to the end of the year, we will be meeting with them, looking at their need for transportation and things like that. So there'll be lots of conversations that will be occurring. And there will be a way that the parents will be notified.
Is this something that we would have to vote on, any of this?
Yes. No, um, Ms., I'm gonna let Dr. wave soon, Mr. handle that. And you.
We started the conversation, we've been out of compliance for several years. Uh, this brings us into compliance with DPI. And so that's a requirement that we have and does not require a, a vote on that. We don't have any choice but to take these steps.
So this, this will get us back into compliance, because we've been having a lot of issues, a lot of troubles. I know with our EC, uh, with our EC department, I've been getting a lot of complaints and stuff all year and for years. So this will get us in compliance, correct?
Yes.
All right, I got Mr. William Gentry.
Along the same lines, uh, with the, the vacancies, we are allowed to continue to, to operate, obviously, with a, a certain number, uh, of vacancies. So we're in compliance based upon what I'm seeing here with the vacancies that are, uh, out beside each of these categories, each of these areas.
That is true, but, um, if you have a vacancy for a teacher in more than one full school year and you ask for a waiver for that teacher for the second year, it may not be approved. So, and so we have, um, a situation where we've not had a teacher for over a year and a half. Um, and it had a vacancy. So the kids are still getting services, they're still being met by, uh, we have many different plans in place of how to get that. But, um, we do not want to continue with, uh, a vacancy the third year.
And that's why one of the teachers that we had is actually moving to one of the schools because of that year and a half opening. We had her, she, um, was actually going to ask for a transfer there. And so that is a perfect situation to allow her to help us fill that gap.
All right, Mr. Gentry again.
As we have, and have, as we know, uh, we have had some difficulty, uh, in recruiting accepted children's teachers and, and keeping them, you know, based upon what we're looking at here. And, and again, this is fluid and sub- subject to change. And, and, and knowing, uh, what I know about how hard our, our staff works towards recruiting and getting the proper personnel, I, I'm just, I'm just reiterating, I know that this is going on. There's, there's always recruitment taking place regardless of what the current situation.
And part, and part of our hope is by having smaller class sizes, as we should in, to help us be in compliance, that teachers would not burn out as quickly, right? If somebody has 16 kids and has to try to provide those individual services to all those students, that's a lot of work on a EC teacher. So by being in compliance, that also allows our teachers to feel like they can really meet the needs of our students. So the other piece we do wanna share, if you look at the transportation, um, you'll see how much cost savings per school, because we do pay for a lot of transportation. Um, and so estimated right now that we would save 105,000, $177.60 just by moving those 37 students. Um, so there's other students that would not, um, need transportation. So that's part of what you don't see here, because they're going to the school now and would not, no longer need transportation. Um, and if you look, what we did, um, Ms. Julie and them found out, we have a hu- total of 157 students that are receiving transportation. Um, the number of students that are receiving transportation that are not just EC are 585. We have a total of seven EC buses and 188, based on the IP in K-12, are getting EC and based on 312, 244, um, three to, I'm sorry, ages three to 21. Our total head count is 2,736 students, which really means that as far as EC transportation, we have about 6% of our kids that receive transportation. Um, when Julie looked up what that looks like across the state, what you'll notice, it goes anywhere from all the way up to 34% of the students to 6%. So we're actually doing pretty well when we look at the number of students getting transportation. And so what this end up being is four teachers that will be moved and 14 TAs. And so it's really 18 moves when we look at staff.
Say, say that again for me?
It's going to be four teacher moves, 14 TA moves, so for a total of 18 staff.
Gotcha. Um, Mr. Terry, you got another question?
I do. If you are, Dr. Carr, I mean, administration, if you are telling us that this, that these changes need to be made for EC compliance, uh, my question is, why is this being presented? And, uh, why is this information being presented in a finance and construction meeting?
So, part of it is because we're looking at how do we save money? Um, so when we think about transportation and teachers and movements, um, so having teachers back at their home school, students back at their home school actually saves us money.
I, I understand, I, I, I completely understand all of that. But you're saying that the reason that we're having to make these changes is to go in compliance with EC. So this sounds more, uh, more like a curriculum issue than a finance issue.
I think it's also about space. Um, we, we don't, uh, space is precious and that was part of the decision-making. Did we have space at other schools? space at other schools? So we did have to address that as well.
Mm-hmm. So, so do we anticipate, you know, uh, you, you already said that this is fluid and it, and it can change. Um, what happens when one of these teachers say, uh, if, if they're going to be moved or, um, they're in a different situation that they're not satisfied with? If they say, well, I'm just going to go to a different county, then we may have to revisit something like this again?
As far as the changes themselves, those teachers, when we look at spots where a teacher would be, that would not change. So we would have to look at what we need to do to help support the teacher to possibly get them to stay or if not, look for another, um, position to fill.
Okay, if you don't mind, now send, send me this through email. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, I got it. I got a question. This will be talked about, I mean, in our regular board meeting, correct?
Yes.
Just like, just like everything that we always talk about in the finance or construction, in the finance or construction meeting, is always brought to the board, to the, to the general board. All right, thanks. Mr. Craig?
I think we mentioned this, but where you're looking at moving teachers or if there was a TA, um, in all of those cases, are they getting closer to home?
As much as possible, yes.
So we, do we have any situation where we got somebody that's 20 miles from home and now they're going to end up going 30? Something staggering is there?
Not staggering, some of them might be two or three more minutes, but nothing big. We literally looked at, when we looked at staff, we looked at their address, looked at the school and looked at the distance and determined how long it's taking them now compared to how long it would take them to get to the new school.
And with the students, all the students would be going back to the school that they should be going to. And, yeah, tell me if I'm wrong, I know what assumptions do. But are they going to a school now that maybe at that time their school did not have a class that would work for that student, but now they do?
Yes. So we literally, if you think of, like I talked about, Lumberton High, they literally have a full class of students that should be at St. Paul's High.
And, and St. Paul's has a class that they can go to.
They will now.
They will.
So that is part of what we're trying to do is because we have students that are on the bus probably 45 minutes to an hour because we have to get special transportation because they're having to go all the way across the county in different places.
Right.
And it was really about, at that point, who had an open space. So first, who was closest and then who was open. So if you already had 16 kids, even though you might be the closest school, I may not be able to send you there. And so then I had to move you somewhere else. So what we're trying to do is stop that from happening, that is truly you're the closest school to that child.
All right. Wait, all right, any more questions? Um, thank you, Dr. Hey, thank you, Dr. Carr and Dr. Julie Oul, thank you. Uh, as I, me to, uh, motion to adjourn by, by Mr. John Simmons. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Craig Lauer, all in favor? Hey, meeting adjourned.